Hello, I'm Mark Els and I'm Barnstable's Town Manager. And this is my Town Manager Update for September 3rd through September 17th. A budget calendar for fiscal year 2026 operating and capital budgets was provided to the Town Council at our last meeting. And we have begun our capital and operating budget preparation and budget instructions have been issued to staff today, actually. So we'll continue the development of our budgets. And the Town Council is scheduled to conduct a joint meeting with the School Committee at the second Town Council meeting in October in accordance with the Town Charter to review financial conditions and financial policy of the town. As previously stated, we continue monitoring our beaches and waterways for any sign of debris resulting from the Vineyard Wind Turbine Incident. Marine Environmental Affairs and Community Services personnel are prepared to respond accordingly. And we urge any member of the public that spots any debris in the water or onshore to report it to a debris hotline that's been created by the company that is responsible for action relevant to this. And this telephone number is 781-831-1134. Relevant to that, I've had a lot of feedback from our residents about reporting and then beginning to think down the line of what are the impacts of this turbine failure? And so on September 10th of this year, I sent two letters regarding these recent turbine blade failures. One letter was sent to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, they refer to that as BOAM, that is, the federal level, expressing concern about the impacts of the turbine failure on the marine environment and the lack of information provided to date on the impacts by regulatory agencies overseeing the projects, meaning what are the impacts of this failure? We haven't heard from the regulators on what they know and what concerns they may have or not have. The other letter I sent was to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, asking questions regarding many areas of concern, including state jurisdiction on the matter and ranging from there to public safety risk on our beaches. I've attached both of these letters. There's a lot more in the body of each letter. I felt it important that we communicate with our state officials, though actually the jurisdiction is federal, for this particular incident. But on the other hand, the state has been working very closely with Nantucket and as a result of this letter, I believe, more closely with us because I did receive a call from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs Office on September 14th and then had a subsequent discussion with the Secretary's Chief of Staff and Assistant Secretary for Government Affairs on Monday regarding the letter I sent. I do anticipate more discussion in the future. Again, I've attached both the letters and as this progresses, I will keep you advised. Another important issue is I, as Town Manager, serve on the Cape Cod Islands Bridge Coalition. And this coalition held its second quarterly meeting on Tuesday, September 10th. And if you're interested in looking at the communications that they're putting out, I've given you a link to a newsletter that they've put out. The Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce is leading this discussion and coordinating the discussion. And the quarterly, second quarterly meeting was to provide a summary of its efforts, which include updates on federal, state, and local engagement, current timelines, estimated costs, and funding for the bridge replacement. Cape Cod Commission staff also provided a presentation on their projected economic impacts of the canal bridges. And then finally, the featured speaker was the Massachusetts Director of Federal Funds and Infrastructure, Quinton Palfrey. And he went into a fair amount of detail with his team on how they've proceeded with securing crucial federal funds for the construction of the Sagamore and anticipating and trying to proceed with the funding for the board bridge. And, you know, they provided an update and basically they've secured a large portion of the Sagamore Bridge Funds, which is about half of the funds, and are proceeding with securing funding for future project, the Bourne Reconstruction Project. Cape Cod Chambers created a Bridge Impact Survey, designed to collect information on how the conditions of the bridges impact your business organization or, you know, the industry that you work in. And so again, I've provided a link to that as well in my newsletter and will keep you advised as this effort continues. As always, we encourage our residents and visitors to download My Barnstable app. The app provides updates on a wide range of information in town, including traffic advisories, public health advisories, updates on our transfer station, and much more. The Town of Barnstable, in partnership with the Barnstable Adult Community Center, Friends of Barnstable Council on Aging, Barnstable Police Department, and the five Village Fire Districts invite residents to the Third Annual Community Safety Day on Wednesday, September 25th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. That's the senior center, if you don't recognize that name. Community Safety Day brings together Barnstable's public safety resources to provide residents with vital tools for staying safe. This free event offers fun, educational, and safety resources, all in one convenient location. Residents will have the opportunity to learn real-world safety tips and gather helpful information to ensure their safety at home, online, and in the community. That concludes my Town Manager's Update. Now I'll ask Kelly Colby, our Communications Manager for the Department of Public Works, to provide an update on water resource management planning in our community that includes our comprehensive wastewater management plan. Thank you.
Hello, Kelly Colby, Department of Public Works, and I will be providing your water resources management update. Before we dive into active construction in our sewer expansion projects, I wanted to take a look at some of the regulatory compliance efforts that we have been making great headway on in regards to our comprehensive wastewater management plan. The first being our watershed permit application. As previously reported, the Town of Barnstable submitted its watershed permit application on September 1st of 2023, so just about a year ago. And we did so with a request for a watershed permit covering the entire town of Barnstable and all of our impacted watersheds, as well as the request to remain on our previously approved 30-year implementation schedule. We were notified on August 1st of this year that our application has completed the Mass DEP Administrative Review Process. And just this week, DPW leadership met with Mass DEP as part of the technical review process. We are preparing responses to minor comments that they had, and we look forward to keeping our community abreast of any changes and ultimately the outcome of the watershed permit application. We feel very fortunate that we've been able to work so closely with Mass DEP on this and appreciate their feedback and working with us on this process. Alongside that, we are due for our five-year Adaptive Management Plan update. This is in accordance with the Cape Cod Commission's 208 Plan Consistency Determination, as well as MEPA approval of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. So essentially, what this means is that the Town of Barnstable will be responsible for submitting a five-year Adaptive Management Plan update that takes a look at how the CWMP not only is being implemented, but what we see as implementation or adaptive management changes for the future. This report, or this plan update, is due at the end of the 2025 calendar year. And in preparation for that, a Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Ad Hoc Advisory Committee was established by Town Council on September 5th of this year. This committee will be instrumental in preparing policy and adaptive management recommendations that will be presented as part of this five-year plan update. So again, more information to come over the next year as we prepare that management plan update. Additionally, on September 4th of this year, so just about a week and a half ago, we submitted our latest fiscal year annual report, the Fiscal Year 2024 CWMP Annual Report, to the Cape Cod Commission. This is available for download on barnstablewaterresources.com. If you go and you visit our Reports and Documents page, we've provided a link directly to that page in this report. You'll be able to access all of our annual reports, including this most recent for 2024. Some highlights from this fiscal year. As we've previously reported, the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project reached substantial completion, both on time and on budget, as did the Route 28 East Sewer Expansion Project. Both of those projects are now willing and able to accept connections, and we'll talk about those in just a moment. Additionally, this fiscal year, $109 million was appropriated for the upgrades to the Barnstables Water Pollution Control Division's Treatment Plant. That was approved in April of 2024 by Town Council. Additionally, Town Council approved an appropriation of $59.65 million for one of our next sewer construction projects, the Route 28 West Sewer Expansion Project, which many of you know is the backbone of our Western Expansion and ultimately allows us to get out to our most vulnerable watershed, the Three Bays. Additionally, this fiscal year, we published our Homeowner Sewer Connection Guide. It was actually published in June of 2024, so just at the close of the fiscal year, and already has received over 700 downloads in its first three months of availability. As a reminder, there are print hard copies of the Homeowner Sewer Connection Guide available. We have hard copies available at the Department of Public Works, located on Falmouth Road, but as well as available at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, the Tax Collector's Window at Town Hall, and also at the Health Division's Office on 200 Main Street. And we continue to expand our distribution centers and will look forward to having those available at other locations across town as well. So available for download, as well as in those locations specifically right now. Major accomplishments for this fiscal year and much more in the annual report, which again can be downloaded off of barnstablewaterresources.com. Now shifting into active sewer construction and sewer connections. The Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project is in full closeout mode. The contractor is working through just some very minor punch list items to wrap up restoration along that project route. And as we've previously reported, first connections for this project in particular were eligible to 151 parcels, which equated to 220 individual dwelling units. As of the date of this report, we've had 15 successful sewer connections completed, and we have currently 22 active sewer connection permits open and in review. And those permits are essentially preparing for construction and DPW inspection. So we are really starting to see an uptick in folks connecting for this project. Additionally, Route 28 East, this project, again, completed substantial completion on time and on budget. Our contractor is now beginning the project punch list process. So major restoration has been completed for this project. Again, all of the repaving that you've seen on the lower section of Finney's Lane, Route 28, West Main Street, that is all complete. And now we're working through final restoration along the shoulders and any other minor items that may have come up during construction. We do expect sewer connections for this project to be available by the end of the calendar year, and we actually have a small portion of properties along West Main Street that are eligible for connection right now. So the communications cadence for connections for this project is going to follow the same process that we did for Strawberry Hill Road. It begins with a project closeout letter. Some of the properties, as I mentioned, along West Main Street in particular, have already received this project closeout letter, which is distributed by the Department of Public Works. This letter includes a very comprehensive overview of the fact that not only is the project complete, but also lets the property owner know who else in town, what are the departments they will be hearing from. Following that project closeout letter is the estimated assessment. This is to be distributed by the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office and allows property owners to have an estimation as to what their sewer assessment, or what many folks know as a betterment, may entail. Next will come your Notice of Sewer Hookup. This is distributed by Barnstable's Health Division and is sent via certified mail. It's tracked very closely in our Open Gov system, so Health Division as well as Finance and DPW can see when these letters are generated, when they are mailed to a particular residence, and when that residence has actually accepted them and that certified mail has been approved. So it's a really robust system that's worked really nicely for us with the Strawberry Hill Road project. And then following that, towards the end of the project closeout, property owners will receive their final sewer assessment. And this will be distributed by the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, similarly to the estimated assessment. We've already seen this process essentially from start to finish play out with Strawberry Hill Road. And again, it's worked very well for us and we look forward to continuing to, of course, improve on the process and work closely with our property owners, connecting as part of Route 28 East. This project, as many of you know, also included the Finney's Lane Pump Station. Testing and startup is ongoing and we believe will be wrapped up over the next calendar We'll now shift over to Centerville Village Sewer Expansion. Specifically, we'll take a look first at the north phase. So as you may remember, you may recall, this project, which was proposed to follow the Park City Wind Duck Bank Route, was split into two phases, a north phase and a south phase. The north phase, we are preparing to begin construction on. This will be our next active construction project. We are currently working with the State Revolving Fund and the Bid Awardee CC Construction to fully award the project. We did also start our property owner outreach. We need to make sure that we're giving property owners ample amount of time to understand the project and also really understand their role in pre-construction. So this property owner outreach has consisted so far of a very robust mailer that has been sent via certified mail. This mailer has included a project overview letter, as well as a project map specific to the north phase, identifying exactly what areas are going to be sewed along Route 28, a portion of Finney's Lane, Old Stage Road, and Shoot Flying Hill Road. And it's also included the Sewer Connection Form, as well as instructions. Now you may recall, the Sewer Connection Form is really a critical piece of pre-construction because it allows the property owner to opine and essentially give their feedback to DPW regarding their specific property. The information provided in the Sewer Connection Form helps us determine the most logical place for their sewer service lateral, or what many know as a sewer stub, to be installed. That stub is installed at the public right-of-way at the property line, and that's essentially where DPW's role ends. We install, as you recall, all of the infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure in the roadway, and then a sewer stub at all of the property lines for the properties identified within the project. So we also include some instructions to help property owners understand how best to fill that form out and, of course, offer the opportunity for our Sewer Connection Program Manager, Ansley de Merlier, to visit with property owners on site. I will say this has been very successful so far with this initial outreach effort. We've received a number of sewer connection forms already for this project, and I've also hosted a number of onsite meetings with property owners. In addition to those important forms, we also include some FAQs regarding the CWMP and sewer expansion, as well as a right-of-way notice to re-educate and inform property owners about the right-of-way and any disturbance that may happen in the public right-of-way versus any construction disturbance on your private property. The next crucial piece to this project will be our first public informational meeting specific to construction for the north phase of this project, and that will be occurring on Tuesday, October 1st, at 6:00 p.m. at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. All of the information about this meeting has been provided in this property owner outreach packet. However, it's a public information meeting. Anyone who is available and wishes to attend is more than welcome. You don't have to necessarily live along this project route. We encourage anyone who's interested in learning more about this specific sewer construction project to attend that meeting. And if you cannot attend in person, it will be recorded by Barnstable Government Access and available on their video on demand, as well as posted to Barnstable Water Resources. So we will have a full recording of that meeting available following the live event. To coincide with that, we are continuing to work through the design of the south phase, which will sewer a portion of Craigville Beach Road and Main Street Centerville. And we continue to advance the efforts to site pump stations and any associated easements along that project route as well. We are tentatively anticipating that construction for the southern phase will start sometime in 2025. Additional sewer expansion projects in design. So keep in mind this map here that you're going to see. This is our most updated map that was actually provided as part of the fiscal year 2024 annual report. It does show all of the sewer projects highlighted in their specific color for Phase 1, but I'm going to just specifically call out a few here that we have boxes for. The first being Route 28 West. We spoke about the appropriation that was awarded earlier this year, the spring, for construction. That project has reached 50% design. That plan review has been completed, and now we're advancing towards final design. We've also initiated our first and only round of private road utility easement takings. This is, again, we've gone through this in the past with the Finney's Lane project. Essentially, taking that utility easement over the private roadway allows us to install the sewer and any related water infrastructure as part of the CWMP Sewer Expansion Project. Doesn't change the status of the roadway. There was a first read at the previous Town Council meeting for both of these projects that we're going to talk about, and we anticipate the public hearing and vote to occur this week. Specifically for Route 28 West, the two private roads that we are talking about are Old East Osterville Road and Marquion Drive. So all property owners butters on those roads have been notified. We do anticipate construction for this project to begin in late 2025. And similarly to that, Finney's Lane Neighborhoods, we are advancing towards final design as well. We are reviewing the designer consultant proposals that have come in from our most recent bid process, and we have now initiated our third round of private road utility easement takings, again, with an anticipated public hearing and vote at this week's Town Council. Construction is anticipated to begin on the Finney's Lane Neighborhoods project in 2026. And then additionally, we have a number of other projects that are in some form of preliminary design or survey. I won't necessarily go through all of them in detail, but you can see that we are working on a number of projects in tandem, including the Long Pond Area and Long Beach Road projects, the Great Marsh Road and Shoot Flying Hill Road Neighborhoods projects, Old Yarmouth Road, and Old Craigville Road projects, all with varying start dates anywhere from construction starting in 2027 through 2030. Now we're going to shift gears a bit, and we're going to look at the 720 Main Street Pump Station Replacement Project. As you may recall, this is part of the town's pump station rehabilitation program, so it's not necessarily a CWMP project, but obviously plays very closely to our water resources efforts and in just ensuring that all of the town's infrastructure is appropriate and up to date and, you know, functioning well for us as we continue to expand sewer in other areas. This pump station replacement project specifically will address capacity concerns within the town's growth incentive zone. So it's a very important project for us, and we're making great progress here. You'll see a photo, an aerial photo of the site that was taken just a few weeks ago. On-site excavation continues. On-site work hours have remained the same from about 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And if you've driven by the site recently, you'll see that the structure is actually advancing above ground. We have walls in place, and we expect that the building will be weather tight by December. In-road sewer construction, you may recall that we do have a few areas where we do need to advance some of the additional infrastructure, the sewer construction installation, specifically Dumont Drive connecting into the pump station location, South Street at C Street, a sewer connection being made there, and then tie-ins along Main Street. We were originally thinking this may begin in early October. It's actually looking more like late October, early November. So we'll continue to keep the community updated and work with the Hyannis BID, of course, the bid to ensure that not only residents and property owners, but also all of our businesses along Main Street and South Street are aware of when construction does resume. We do anticipate construction for the project as a whole to be completed in the spring of 2025, and we are proud to report that the project remains on schedule and on budget. We'll also take a look at the Water Pollution Control Facility. There are a number of different projects and initiatives ongoing here, the first being the solids processing facility upgrades. Since our previous report, that project is now complete and essentially just being closed out, sort of dotting our i's, crossing our t's, but happy to report that that project has reached fruition. The Nitrogen Removal and Headworks Improvements Program, since our last report, we have received the 60% design drawings, and those are currently under review. I just want to call your attention again to the image on the right-hand of your screen. Just a reminder that on barnstablewaterresources.com, as well as Barnstable Government Access's YouTube channel, we do have a number of educational videos, the first being our visit to the Water Pollution Control Division facility, the site, sort of that four years later, taking a look at the site where we met with Division Supervisor Andy Boulay to talk about all the improvements we anticipate this project bringing. And we also have our roundtable discussion with Andy Boulay, as well as Assistant Director of DPW, Rob Steen, where we talked about sort of the next generation of wastewater treatment. So if anyone's curious of sort of what this project entails and the progress we're hoping to make and ultimately the next generation of technology we're looking to bring to the town, I encourage you to take a look at those videos again, posted on barnstablewaterresources.com, as well as available through Barnstable Government Access. And then additionally, we continue to host our monthly meetings with Mass DEP and work with our consultant, CDM Smith, on water reuse and disposal alternatives as part of our effluent disposal evaluation. We're also going to shift over quickly to the Hyannis Water System and the Straightway and Hyannis Port Water Treatment Facilities improvements. Since our last report, we've made great progress on this project in particular. As a reminder, this project is ultimately going to help us restore the amount of water that the wells currently can supply to permitted capacity. So over time, things will degrade. That's just common in any type of infrastructure. So this project ultimately is going to allow us to get back up to our permitted capacity, as well as also allow us to treat our water to its fullest potential and to treat at a year-round capacity. So there's a couple of different initiatives here at this project. A, maximizing the permitted capacity, also some weatherization and just overall infrastructure improvements. So when we last met and we last reported, we did have our public outreach process that had commenced, which included mailers to property owners along the one-mile buffer of the project area, as well as a public informational meeting that was held. All materials have been available in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, and there have been translation services available. You can find all of those iterations on the town website, on the DPW page under Water Supply Projects. And where are we currently? Currently, as of this month, we have filed our MEPA notification, our Environmental Impact Report, and we also have a public environmental review that was placed in the Cape Cod Times with a public comment period that is now open, and that will remain open for, I believe it's a few weeks. But again, you can find all of the information on the project page and feel free to submit public comment, either directly to Water Resources at townofbarnstableMA.us or directly by contacting the Department of Public Works. After that public comment period closes, we do anticipate moving into final design and permit approvals this fall into this winter, and then you'll see the cadence of bidding and contract award and anticipated construction for fall of 2025. Lastly, in terms of general water quality updates, taking a look at some of the projects ongoing, we have the Clamshell Cove Road and Old Shore Road Katuitt Stormwater Improvement Projects. Both of these projects are being done in collaboration with the Natural Resources Conservation Service through a grant to fund drainage improvements to reduce stormwater inputs from these particular locations. Initial designs for both sites are ready for review, and we will be hosting a public information meeting at the end of this month on Monday, September 30th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Katuitt Library. Additionally, cyanobacteria monitoring, our program has been ongoing through the summer, and we're now in our fall seasonal sampling period. Sampling will conclude at the end of September, however, dependent on results with any of our particular ponds or lakes, there may be subsequent sampling and, of course, any reissuing or removing of water quality alerts as appropriate. As a reminder, all water quality alerts are posted on barnstablewaterresources.com, as well as shared through the My Barnstable mobile app and on Town of Barnstable social media. This program is done in collaboration and partnership with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, the APCC. They handle the majority of the sampling for us. We then analyze the results and, using their guidance, ultimately issue alerts as appropriate. So it's a really robust system and a great collaboration that we've had with them, with all materials being available on Town of Barnstable media vehicles. Lastly, the Long Pond Marston's Mills Floating Treatment Wetland Pilot Project. As you remember, earlier this spring, it was a great success that we had a lot of folks who came out and helped from various special interest groups, as well as town employees and consultants, to help with the deployment of the floating treatment wetland. UMass Dartmouth School of Marine Science and Technology, SMAST, is actually scheduled to collect their first plant biomass samples next week, the week of September 23rd. Samples will continue to be collected both in this coming spring of 2025, as well as next fall of 2025, to track and determine the phosphorus uptake and ultimately see if the project, the pilot project, has been successful. So we look forward to those results and reporting on the results to our community. So we look forward to those results, and reporting on the results to our community. And with that, it was a lengthy update, thank you very much.